Sure, can you hear us?
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, everything and everything.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We will call needs order. Uh, we do have a forum. I'll take approval of the agenda in a minute, please.
So move.
No, second. Motion by Abrams, second by Smebey. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry. Morning, Rich.
The universe will be.
Agenda backup. We have, uh, general maintenance. Obviously, we're outblading, keeping things going. I know that Dura-Patcher's been out. So it's summer, summer-ish. Um, the things we've got going on, um, you guys have in front of you, I think Jackie gave you or an agreement between Worth County and the City of Fertile for our foreign market project paving through town. There's something we worked on, or I worked on with the previous mayor and the maintenance person that are aware of the project. The number in that agreement is just an estimate based on the bidding. And so, you know, the final, the final construction will determine what the costs are. I just want to make sure you guys are okay with the agreement before I send it to the, to the city for their approval.
Is this, I, 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 how did you figure, how did they figure this, I guess, as far as, is it just a percentage or?
I figured everything in the right of way, or, so the, the paving and stuff is, is the county's responsibility. Anything outside the twenty-two-foot paving, according to twenty-eighty agreement, is the city's. They receive the foreign market jurisdictional transfer funds that we get. Years ago when that was set up, the county board at that time decided to give, we get all the tra- jurisdictional transfer funds and we, as a county, could decide to give them back to the cities or keep them. And at the time, the, the county board supervisor decided they were going to give a hundred percent of that money back to the cities. And that money would be used on anything outside the twenty-two-foot paved area and the county would take care of the, the paving alone. So what I did is I broke down the numbers of what was strictly city costs, like manhole adjustments and anything outside the paving, which would be, um, they wanted, uh, dirt shoulders in locations where they were already mowing versus aggregate. So that cost is going to be a little bit higher for them, other than if they were going to put rock in there. So anything outside the right of way, I use the percentages to, to come up with a dollar figure for those, for those to pay.
Sounds good to me. Well, we'll take a motion to accept the agreements between Worth County and the City of Fertile.
So move.
Second, motion of second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, motion carry.
I don't like, AJ, if you just want to sign that or whatever, that's fine. Um. The next thing we have is a DOT program amendment, which is, it's, it says amendment, but it's actually just a revision and they can do a revision by resolution. And the only thing that was changed was, um, actually, you know what? Wrong county, we don't have to do this. I put it on here just in case I needed to. And at the time, we changed some, what happened was that three hundred and forty-second Street Bridge was bid once and then had to rebid it again, so I had to put it in the program. And at the time I put it in the program, or actually when it was first bid, it was a fifty-fifty split of, of HBP funds and local funds. And when we rebid it again, we want to do a hundred percent HBP funds. Well, at that time, I was talking with the DOT about it and they said, let's just do it at a hundred percent. You can amend your budget later, or revise your program later. And after talking to them Friday, they said everything went through the way it should. So don't worry about any revision or amendment. So at this point in time, we won't be doing any of this. So I think everything's okay, uh, according to DOT. So we'll just kind of ignore this. We'll still have the budget amendment, but we won't need to revise the, the program for now. So we'll ignore that on the, on the program and then, uh, move on there. That makes sense. You guys understand that? I guess it's kind of confusing, but, um, another thing we've got going on right now, the DOT is going to be, uh, using our, uh, Dogwood Avenue for detour on the box, on the box collar replacement, uh, Highway nine. Um, they're going to be going up Dogwood, Wood and up to, uh, A thirty-eight and across into, into Winnebago County. And that road had some, had some blowups this spring. The DOT was looking at it and kind of requesting that some repairs be done or had some concerns about some locations. I got Heartland in there to do a, give us a quote on some work. They took some picture, the, the state took some pictures too. Um, we had a quote for about twenty, twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. The state actually located a couple more spots they wanted fixed, so the cost will be a little bit higher. But I did talk to the DOT and they're in agreement with paying fifty percent of the costs to repair this, which is better for us, mainly because it's a rush job, so it's a little bit more expensive than if we were going to do it, try to schedule it later on. So I think it's a, going to be a good, a good thing done for us. I mean, it doesn't address every issue on that paved surface, which is in the program to get repaired sooner or later. But for now, to get the DOT traffic put on it, um, we're going to get the repairs done. And I think, you know, if it stops raining or what, whatever they can do, they're supposed to be doing it today because the DOT was going to shut down tomorrow. So if the rain delayed Heartland, it'll just delay the state's, um, repairs or their, their repair project by a day or so. And they're okay with that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then the other thing we had to talk about, which I didn't, the, I forwarded, forwarded you guys, the, uh, the, uh, Freeborn Wind had a, had a request to modify the, the, uh, agreement. Did you guys see that at all?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys get to look at that at all and what they were proposing? I've got a, what they were, in the agreement, what they were requesting was to come up with an evaluation of the hard service roads for loss of life due to their traffic on hard surface paved roads, or hard service roads. And, um, I'm a little unfamiliar with it, but they were trying to do a granular equivalency to compare the current conditions and compare it to what their projected estimated or equivalent single axle load counts were going to be on that road. I mean, I think it's a good way, it's a way to evaluate the hard service roads and get some funding back as a pre and a post-construction method to, it's hard, it's hard to, uh, it's, it's, it's easy to go and video a road right away and then when the project's done, go and video a road afterwards and find out if there's any deficiencies caused by construction traffic. But it's, those are the obvious ones. And if nothing shows up, there's still loss of life in that pavement. You just might not see it. And this is one way that they'll do it. They'll test the, the pavement. I don't know exactly, the exact procedure and how they do it unless they do, um, fall-in-weight deflectometer testing again on the roads to evaluate the life, the, compare the life between the pre and post-construction. But I think it's something we ought to do, just to kind of lock them into being able to pay for something on hard service roads. And they had come up with a, a construction road improvements program through American Testing Company. And in that email you guys had received also, they had talked about cement stabilization on a certain portion of road. And in lieu of cement stabilization, they're requesting nine inches to twelve inches of granular replacement versus cement stabilization. Either way, I guess I'm okay with whatever technique they want to use. They're the ones that are going to have to maintain the roads when, you know, they talked about removing the aggregate when they were done, which is fine, but it might be that we might want to keep some of that granular back in the roads, depending on how it, how it affects our side slopes and things like that. But I'd be all for keeping as much of that granular material in the roads as we can because our roads need that structure anyway. I think it's, they probably want to do the cement stabilize, or they want to do the aggregate versus cement stabilization just because I think of costs. And I guess I'm okay with, with that technique if you guys are, so.
I guess, I guess what I think is, yeah, they should leave the rock because if they are putting the rock down and then taking it back up, we don't gain anything. Um, if we make them do cement stabilization, at least we gain that in our road base.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, we, we got to get something out of it, uh, to make sure our roads stay at the par.
Okay, yep. And I'll, I'll have that discussion when we talk about this again. I know that they've, in this whole document of their improvements, I think they're trying to follow what they have here. And they have certain sections where blading in a couple inches of aggregate, um, is, is what they want to do versus some other techniques. I think the cement stabilization only was going to affect, I don't know if it was a half a mile or a miles worth of road. I'd have to dig back into that chart and find out exactly what they were proposing. But I don't think it was a very long stretches of, they had, um, they had, uh, let's see, a few miles actually of stabilization, full-depth reclamation. They're not giving me all the lengths of the roadway, but they had one, two, three, four, five. They had six sections of it, um, that they wanted to do. And I'm okay with them replacing that with, uh, with aggregate.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I guess as long as we get something that's going to stay and keep our roads good. So if they want to do the rock, I'm okay with it.
Yep. And like I said, I'll just have to make sure that when they're done, whatever rock gets left isn't affecting our side slopes and making sure we have those grades proper when they're done.
Right, right.
Yeah, can always adjust the side slope.
Yeah, there's probably enough ditches around there that need to be cleaned and could pull some of that up, side slope anyways, so.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
So I guess, I don't know, you guys had a, there should have been a document. Jackie, do you have that document of that agreement change?
Is that in your email?
Yeah, I think I forwarded everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in the email, I know, but.
It should have been a signature block for every, everybody so that they could get that moving.
In fact, I read.
Oh, yeah, this should be. Page, so it's page review sign.
Right.
And it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
You can't move on it.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, Rich, so we have to wait till next week.
Alright.
Um, but yeah, talk with them, I guess, and figure out the row, the rock issue first and then we can put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay, I thought I'd requested it, but maybe I didn't have that clear.
Okay.
Alright.
Another thing while we're discussing all that out there, I talked to you before. Those crick crossings, they want, they've asked about putting in temporary pipes, brought some cricks for crane crossing.
For drainage ditch?
I'm assuming it all is. I got match from the guy.
Instead of tearing the crane down and.
Yeah, but they want to do nine of them, um, they're temporary for a maximum of ninety days. And, was wondering if there's any permits or not, which I don't think we would have a permit process. We'd have more of a permission process, but with the landowners actually being the, owners of the ditch, yeah.
So what kind of crossings do they talk about? Full bore dirt and?
Put actual.
Some kind of bridge just lay across there.
They'll do, uh, they'll do culvert pipes, fill them in.
Okay. One thing you have to, okay, that's fine. One thing I have to worry about. One thing you have to worry about.
Oh. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. One thing they have to worry about is that when the crane crosses the fields, I've, it was last year, or a couple years ago, in Barton Pond, it's actually flattened the tile. I mean, you could, we replaced six-inch tile that was actually completely flattened.
Yep.
You can just tell by where, right where the track was.
They drove right on the line and left.
Well, no, they crossed it, they just crossed it. So that's one, tile, tile line issues, but that's up to the farmer and make sure they get fixed, yeah.
I think their map indicates or shows where their, their crane, their crane walking goes to each field, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, yeah, they're, they're basically, as I say, we don't have a permit process, but I suppose we just got to make sure, we allow them to do it, make sure that everything gets put back right, right? That, make sure the landowner's happy.
Well, you want to be careful too. I don't know if the landowners may want to start keeping some of them in there, but if you're going to do that, you're going to have to make sure they're sized properly. You know, if, if there's a request to keep some of that stuff.
Right, well, there's no request. These guys are just asking for temporary.
Right. They're requesting for temporary, but a landowner might say, well, it's already in, why don't we just leave it? And then you've got to figure out whether or not it was, you know, if it's, if it's temporary, it's a little different as far as sizing goes. If it's a temporary thing, you don't need to really meet the, too many requirements for flow. But I mean, you're not going to want to keep something, you know, temporarily, they could put, you know, for regular drainage, they could undersize the pipe just to get across. And then, you know, they're going to pull it out anyway, so it really would be a, a non-detrimental thing unless you really got a flood event. But, and then, and it's, it's a bright watch out anyway, but.
You'd want it up to specs for your hundred-year floods regardless, right, because they do.
If, if you plan on, if you plan on keeping it in, yeah.
Let's just put it in that day, take it out that day, kind of situation, but I'm guessing that's not it.
Well, they have to track back.
Yeah, they might be putting them in for the season, so I think that we'd want them up to.
They said.
Engineering specs.
They said up to ninety days.
Yeah, so that would say definitely, we're going to probably get a five-inch rain sometime this summer, seems like every year, so. I'd hate to have somebody get mad over an undersized crossing, but.
Sure.
It'd probably wash it off.
They very well could. Well, dam up water could, yeah.
Pressure out, and the pressure could shove it out of there, shove it out, so.
So I, I have no problem, I guess, with doing that as long as they're putting, taking out correctly, so.
Alright.
To be removed as quickly as possible, to restore the nat- natural flow, yeah, maximum flow, okay.
That's what I'll, that's what I'll email them back then and let them know that it just needs to be designed to, to take the capacity of the ditch now.
Right.
In case there is a flooding event and be restored to.
Well, they could have it temporary, like they.
Any landowner.
Put it in there and then go across two days later and they could take it out, that's what I was.
That's different. If they're going to be in for up to ninety days, I mean, it'd be no different if I wanted to put a crossing, it would have to be at specs, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Alright, anything else, Rich?
Good for now. I'll hang on here in case others have questions.
Okay, I got, well, I've told, uh, thanks for Russ, take care of the problem we had on four hundred and ninety street, the complaint we had.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Let them know that, those that I got taken care of.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thanks, Rich. Alright, drainage. Ready to accept this report?
Yeah, I guess I talked to John and he said that it was okay to, I could have accepted it in the first place.
Okay.
But they're just going to do an amendment or whatever, and so, so let's just officially accept that report.
Okay.
So move, accept issues, report DD forty-six, last night.
Motion is our second?
Oh, second.
Motion by Abrams, second by Smebey. Any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, still roll call. Abrams?
Aye.
Smebey?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Motion pass? Alright. And then that one, is that tomorrow?
No, 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 this, this is that easement that I showed you guys. I don't know if we want to get John on the phone or, because it was just delivered and I don't know what to do with it.
Be nice to have a little intel, yeah, universe is just, I mean.
And I know Don Etler sent me something a while ago, but.
Oh, okay.
Oh, gone.
That's your responsibility, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hey, five, one, five.
Nine, one.
Nine, one, five, one, five.
Four, six, zero.
Four, six, six.
Nine, six, nine, six, nine, nine. Might bounce this to somebody else.
John, Ken Abrams. Jackie just received a, uh, agreement between, uh.
It's a warranty deed between, uh.
Easement.
Easement.
On BD twenty-one West.
Okay.
It was just dropped, I'm guessing Mark Lynn dropped it off. Are, are we, are, is the board just supposed to go ahead and approve it?
Or do you all, or do you all look at it?
He's helping you, he's helping that out. He's been, he's been trying to track down the easement, but I, I thought the deed was already filed.
Well, this is an easement.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yes, okay, so last I understood, the easement, the city of Northwood actually will hold that as far as, um, somebody outside the district has to, to hold the actual easement. I did not, did not realize he was dropping it off today, but, but yeah, if, if it's been approved and supplied to you, then yes, you should be able to just, uh, approve that. And we would have an easement held by a third party for that mitigation site.
The city has signed it.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then I think, I think it needs to be recorded and, and recorded often.
And while we got you on the phone, you guys had mentioned that there still isn't somebody to mow.
Yeah, I talked to the landowners on that same district with that wetlands there.
Yeah.
Um, and the last time we had talked, every, all the landowners were in discussion of who's going to mow it, who's going to take care of it. Um, and nothing's been figured out yet, so. And there's one landowner nearby that's interested in grazing. Is that possible? With cattle out there?
No, not.
I kind of wondered that with a wetland like that too, but.
It, yeah, um, it can be used for, for grazing and it cannot produce, uh, an agricultural commodity. You can't fail to hay and sell it.
Can't even hay it.
Okay. So all we got to do is mow it and maintain weeds and trees and.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, we'll have to, maybe we'll just put that on a couple of landowners in that area to get the discussion going amongst them and see if they want to take care of it or if they want to hire somebody to take care of it or what they want.
Yeah, so, Jackie, you'd have to remind me, the renters name there before they purchased the ground.
Oh, Jay, the, the tenant, Jay McDonald.
Would he, would he be willing to do it for?
I'm not sure. I, I, I could check with him. He didn't send a bill for the first time.
Oh, that's some, uh, that's a little weedy.
So he far, he farms the land and then see if he wants to.
I think he farms what's around it.
Yep.
Okay.
Still.
Now you want to see if he's interested in doing that or should we leave that up to landowners or?
Because it needs to be done one way or the other, and if, if they don't want to get charged for it, somebody needs to step up. Basically, but then that person should get compensated if nobody, uh, somebody should get compensated.
Yeah, whoever's doing it should get compensated.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, Jay was pretty willing to do it last, and I just wish he would have been to the bill.
Yeah, he's still been. I think I reminded him again too.
Well, I'll make contact with a couple of landowners out there and just, maybe they can get the discussion going in their neighborhood and, and if they don't want to mess with it and would just rather pay Jay to do it and he's interested, then we'll leave it up to him, I guess, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, that it for John?
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
I was going to ask, since I'm black egg, we didn't think about the meeting this morning. Did, did we decide if we're going to continue the hearings tomorrow?
Yes.
Sounds like it.
Yeah. Okay, so I will plan to come up, uh, if you still want me on the phone at least while we're.
Yes.
Going, doing that process, okay. Very good.
So we'll talk to him about, about ten-thirty, I think.
Ten.
Ten, or ten.
Ten, ten AM, alright.
Ten. Alright, thanks, John.
Alright, thank you.
I didn't mean to schedule it for ten o'clock. Okay, so, we need a motion to approve this easement.
I will make a motion for this easement.
Second. Okay, there's motion a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. We'll look at this, and that, it says notary, but I don't know, I don't know if you have to sign it or if Chad is going to have to be on notary, so.
Yeah.
Uh, any claims?
Yep. Got some checks and some stamp laws, so there's two different ones there.
Snap warrants. Boltman make for about eighteen, twenty, twenty-three thousand. Roblist for three hundred and ten dollars, tire repair. Yep. Just the Boltman make and Roblist brothers. Your motion to.
So move.
Claims?
Oh, second.
Motion for second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry.
And while we're still in drainage, I, um, talked with Don Etler and you had technically approved all the brush, tree spraying and everything for the drainage district, but I only had the list for twenty and I didn't have the list for nineteen yet, so I have one more list that I'll need to make up record so that they can be officially, yeah.
So, someone will need action right now.
Um, you've already approved it.
Correct, it's just a.
Yeah. You already saw the map for it, you just didn't see the words.
Right.
And Don discussed it when you approved it.
Don Etler and Stone.
Yeah.
Said earlier, which doesn't surprise me.
Any other regular claims?
Um, they have just on payroll.
Well, second, that, motion to approve payroll claims and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Alright.
Aye, opposed? Carry. One more, Becko, Melissa was on there, but she said she had a phone call, so I don't know. Well, so are you there? If not, we'll jump back to you. Okay, so I'd like to go back to her, Jason Petersberg.
Not much new to report this week. Their full-speed ad had a good week last week, construction-wise. A little wet out there today. There's, I don't think there's going to be anybody there today, but should be picking up where they left off tomorrow. No issues that I'm aware of. We have sent the plating documents to planning and zoning and. No issues that I'm aware of, we have sent the plating documents to planning and zoning and are awaiting a, a meeting date on that, so.
Sounds good. Scene re-changing out there a little bit, is it?
A little bit.
Good. I'll be out there tomorrow morning, I'll, I'll investigate while I'm out there.
I think there was a utility truck or something there today, I don't know what they're doing, but this morning.
A, a Heartland truck?
Well, I didn't, I actually come down one oh five, just let them come down Wheeler Wood there, but there was a truck with flashing lights sitting over there next to the casino shed, a, a big, bigger truck, and maybe, maybe they were fixing equipment or something too, but.
Holding the power pole, they have to hold two of those poles to get by with the water mains, so.
Okay.
Buy one last week and do the other one first part of this week, so.
Okay. Jeff, thank you, Jason.
It's looking good out there.
It is.
Progress?
Lot of progress in a short timeframe there. Thinking that the utility and grading work should be done while they're pending, uh, about the fourth of July, so.
Cool.
Perfect.
We're good. Lot of iron out there, some other projects come through for the dirt guy, so he brought extra equipment and gonna try and get it done quickly.
Okay, good deal. Good deal, alright, nothing else, thanks Jason, appreciate it. Uh, people service, Chris is on there, if he's got anything to discuss?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, sounds good, um, were you gonna be able to meet out there tomorrow, or just let us deal with the DOT?
Oh, I, I have to run to Waterloo in the morning.
Okay, no, that's fine, Mark and I, Mark and I'll take care of it, I did see the permit come through on email this morning, so we'll just, we'll do the permit work and talk with them and, and go from there, so.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Uh, any reports?
Nope.
Payroll or salary changes?
Nope.
Oh, department head discussion. Um, we still on pace?
Well, there was one clarification that I wanted to make, that we weren't officially opening for appointments on May eighteenth. That's what was put in the newspaper.
Okay.
Um, it was only if we had what we needed, like for, yeah.
Basically.
And that didn't happen, I don't think, unless Jake got something that we don't know about.
Okay.
So, i- it's not official official.
Okay. Um, I guess we'll start with, uh, Jake Hanson. Did you get your stuff, Jake?
Can you sneak away from that?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Got you now.
Okay, uh, no, they haven't come in yet, we're, we're scheduling our first appointments for Wednesday. The guy had promised me for sure they'd be here Wednesday, we're hoping today or tomorrow. Um, already, right now, we're pretty overwhelmed though. Um, I got, I sent an email out to our driver's license supervisor, just seeing if we could get another, uh, issuance station for driver's license, that's been the big one, we already had about thirty, forty calls for driver's licenses this morning. Uh, trying to set appointments for Wednesday, and, um, we got, we're starting to fill up pretty quick for title transfers and everything else, but we're, we're still kind of vetting everyone, really encouraging them to go online and pay, um, do everything they can through the mail or the Dropbox still, so. That's kinda, kinda where we're sitting, we've changed our, our lunches around, so that we'll just be down for an hour, uh, during the lunch hour, and then everybody else start taking, uh, appointments at the same time after that, but. That deal, uh, the no wait inside thing that Joel got for us, looks like it's gonna work pretty slick. Uh, we tested that out, uh, a few times last week, and, and it's kind of a neat tool, I think that's really gonna help us out, but. We're, we're already seeing, uh, the first, first week or two here, it's gonna be, gonna be pretty hairy, I think.
I'm sure, it's gonna be playing catch-up now.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, yeah, if you got it under control, we won't even, we'll just leave you in charge of that, so.
Alright, sounds good, thank you.
Um, see a chat from Teresa there, they're on the office waiting for their shield to be installed. So we're trying to do the same situation as much as they can on the phone or emails, which was a good idea. Alright, otherwise, uh, Sheriff, thank.
Uh, not a lot from here. Um, thank you for getting the emails out to Jane and that, she did mention she got some from you guys, so she's saying that they're gonna be talking to not take away DCI agents out there, so that's a good thing. Only other thing I have is I've been out on the wind farm, uh, last week several times. I took complaints from some of the farmers, uh, went out and talked to them, talked to Wanzick. I think we got them resolved, but now we're also having some issues on people, uh, not obeying, uh, flaggers and being a little ornery out there on that, so we're probably gonna be out there quite a little bit. We did not receive any kind of contact information. Um, as of Friday, we didn't have a map of any of the new turbines that were going up out there. We are working, Maryland's been out there talking to them, Richard sent us some stuff on Friday. But we kinda need those in place, if we have an emergency out there, we gotta go to a wind farm site. Um, especially if there's two or three on the same road. So we're working through that, but that's something probably we should've had well before they started production out there. Otherwise, I'll take any other questions.
Dan, I'd like to also know if there's issues with the contractor, I feel I'm kind of the liaison out there. If there are issues with traffic and roads, I'd like to know about that stuff too, and I know you called them last one, so.
Yeah, I talked to Aaron, who is their head of security up in Minneapolis right now. Um, so it's kind of them, one thing they're not calling us when they're having issues, um, which hopefully they're gonna start, because there's not much we can do afterwards, but, um, they definitely had some stuff out there that was concerning. Um, one vehicle went through a flagger going sixty-five miles an hour, and, um, it's just dangerous for some of them working out there, so.
Right, and that, I would like to know too, because if they're not getting the proper traffic control set up, that's something we need to evaluate. I did also, I've sent emails out and asking them to consider doing a daily email on progress and, and potential future, you know, what they're doing today, where they're working, and what they're planning on doing tomorrow, so that anyone who signs up for that email address can get those notifications daily, so they can plan their day. It worked really well in Mitchell County, we had, uh, we had some people calling and complaining, and I asked them if they had signed up for the email, and they said, well, no. And once they got signed up, the phone calls quit, so, um, it would be a good idea, I don't know how far they're working on it, I just sent them the information on Friday too, as to a format that was used in Mitchell County, and I thought it worked rather well, it kept anybody who signed up for it in the loop as to what was going on.
Yeah, no, it sounds good, yeah, I can get you, I'll let you know when we get the calls, it's just, uh, you know, we gotta have contact numbers before this starts, that last one, we had a fatality and some rescue calls out there, and that was a mess getting people out to them, so.
I give you the contacts I have, when I've talked, I, it's, it's weird, I get, I get from Wanzick, Wanzick says they wanna be the contact to the ones out there, Excel want, I get, there's times where I have a, a conversation about a certain thing, and then each individual entity, Excel Energy and Wanzick will each send me a different email, and it's kind of confusing too. I'm just gonna deal with the, with the, when it comes to construction-related things, I'm gonna deal with Wanzick, because they're the ones that are doing the work, they're the ones that have the subcontractors, so. To me, if there's an issue with anything construction-related, it goes to Wanzick, and they talk to their sub, who I think is Barniki that's doing stuff right now, but, um, I just as soon address it with one person, then try to get a hundred different people involved, and then getting a hundred different responses on how it should be handled. It's easier for the, and it's easier for the prime contractor, Excel's the owner, but they've hired Wanzick to be their construction people, and it's easier for them to manage construction when they know what's going on, so.
I, I agree with that, except when twelve o'clock at night, when we got another person's trailer broken into, or we got one of their vehicles running, we need a contact for that division.
Yeah.
I mean, Wanzick isn't gonna know what tools are in that, or who should be out there.
No, I understand that, I understand that, so.
So I can't just go with one contact number?
No, I'll give you, yep.
Okay, well good on there, any else for Dan? Well, thank you, Dan, hopefully it goes a little smoother from here on out. Uh, Mark Tomlinson.
I don't really have any updates, uh, other, you know, we're, we're gonna go out and talk with the DOT tomorrow morning for that siren placement. Uh, hopefully that meets, so whatever qualifications or standards they have, and that's approved for that site. Um, other than that, uh, on the COVID front, working with, there are a few requests for some PPE, getting that in. And then, uh, some localized, uh, I would, surveillance testing in the county, kind of getting that process worked through, we don't have a lot of it hammered out yet, but working on it, so. Hopefully we can get that done, too.
Sounds good, uh, eight o'clock out there tomorrow, right?
Yes, that's what I got.
Okay, I'll be out there tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Alright, and Mark? Okay, thanks, Mark. Um, I did see auditor, my auditor's right here.
You're good.
I'm thinking, uh, where is she, okay, uh, you got anything new, anything?
Nope.
Playing as is, huh?
Yeah.
Sounds good, I'll see that. When does she come back?
Hopefully, do we have the election, basically.
Cause that's her, I'm trying to be, yeah.
Yeah, okay, true. Um, I did see, uh, Sessors Office, full staff again, and they're ready to go whenever we decide to open, so. Um, Jess?
She's there somewhere, I didn't know.
I didn't see her on here, is she on there? See her. I don't either.
I just lost it.
Alright, um. Otherwise, I'm gonna jump back and see if, Melissa, are you available yet, are you still on the phone?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, how's things going?
Pretty good, I am finishing up the summary event calendar, which, um, I've looked at some of the costs and everything, so. It's probably gonna be an ad in the bigger newspapers, and it'll just be a postcard in the local newspapers, that should come out in a couple of weeks, so, but everything is being canceled.
That's kind of what I've been hearing and seeing, so. Unfortunate.
Yeah. But, other than that, I have another, um, meeting with Golden Shovel this week, so I should get some pricing narrowed down as far as, um, what they can do for us in the interim here.
Okay. Did you, or?
I'll hopefully, um, before your next meeting.
Okay, are you looking for a tentative date for another board meeting?
Um, I haven't scheduled anything, um, there's one, our next scheduled one is in July, and then I was going to email the entire board with different options, and then we can decide if you wanted to have a, an actual meeting, or just, uh, move forward with one of the options.
Okay, that sounds good, so. Anything else?
Um, no, not that I can think of.
You got anything? Nope, alright, thanks, Melissa, appreciate it.
Oh, I do have one thing, was Jason on the call?
Uh, Jason still is.
Okay, um, could I get a copy of the updated, um, lot sizes? I know they're not probably going to be set in stone, I did speak with a architect slash developer last week, who was interested in just looking at the preliminary things, and I don't think I have anything most recent.
You'll have it shortly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep, I think so, I think I'm done.
Okay, thanks, Melissa.
You bet.
Alright, uh, any other department head stuff, I think we pretty well got that covered, offices are ready, we'll, maybe later this week, Joel?
Uh, just an FYI, our primary storage is going to be upgraded or actually replaced with a new one this week. So hopefully we will not have much downtime at all, we're not expecting it. Uh, but just to let everybody know that we might have a few little pickups this week, just because it's been five years since we, uh, since we replaced. Amen, yeah.
That's gonna be a big flash drive, I mean.
Yeah, the slider.
Other than that, everybody's still running good? Good deal? Yeah. Uh, Supervisor Weekly Report, again?
Yeah, I had the, uh, Flyers for Children Zoom Conference last Tuesday. And we got some contractors, and that, twenty-two thousand, why we're dollars, we're going to the contact, contact, de-cap coordinator, so. Do you have to sign, sign that this morning?
Sounds good, is that it? Yeah.
They're quite weak, other than I did the follow-up on BD seven, I looked at some stuff down there, there's, uh, the ditch part's been cleaned, for now, ill-levelled, the spoils this fall, and come back, and there was several drain pipes that, the last time I was cleaning, whether it was seven or ten years ago, I'm not sure, that were actually just bent over, and there's a bunch of rusted out ones, so they'll replace them this fall, so. That'll be all, it's not, um, definitely changed the flow of water out there, so it's well needed. And then there's a couple beaver dams on BD eight that need to be removed, I think, yeah, I don't think that's been done, so. Where they're coming from, we don't know, but.
The magicians, they just show up out of nowhere.
Oh, we did have another Zoom conference with Northwest Care, they, they accepted us, but, uh, and Cusworth County signed all letters, but Little Bay County's still dragging their feet a little bit, so, I don't know what's happening there.
Yeah. They're meeting today, or tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
And that could affect the whole thing, right?
Yeah, we don't know, uh, I did talk to Jane a little bit. Sat here, she put some signs up, anyway, they, when they meet, they might get that, uh, contagious removed. So then that would not affect us, you know. Then, then, basically what, what, they said that they're gonna let the state force them to do something, well, we don't know, you know.
I don't, I have, after all this work.
Yeah.
And now they wanna drag it out, but just. Don't be on me.
It's all, yeah, say, amen.
I feel your pain, man, I've. I had a deal, I'm like, just, I don't know. Uh, I didn't have, I met up at the casino, um, with the siren guy, Mark, getting Chris. We met out there, got a spot picked out right next to water treatment plant, to get that tornado siren put in, and we can just shoot over about fifty feet, sixty feet, grab power out of the treatment plant, and, uh, so we're meeting the DOT tomorrow, uh, because it is their property, it's in their right of way, uh, we should get a permit from them, show them what we're doing, and I'm sure they won't be okay, but we should do proper steps with them, too, Mark and I are gonna meet out there with them tomorrow morning. That was it.
We did have a department heading scheduled for today, after the, I, I imagine that is, those are, Brett?
Pretty much doing every. For now, anyways, yeah. Alright, so I think for future agenda. Hearing tomorrow, Brett?
Great.
And there's a lot of grants backing up, in more ways than one. So, what, we'll, we'll have to talk to John more tomorrow, and just figure out, because we have stuff set up for the eighth, the fifteenth, the June, I have that, we're not even gonna wanna do it then, so. Because people don't wanna accept Zoom, we, we've had to conform, but there's people that don't wanna do it, so.
Yeah, and we can't technically, we usually, to the fairgrounds and so, still can't have more than ten people, and you're getting, technically, so.
And I feel their pain, I, I didn't like doing Zoom either, but sometimes to keep stuff going.
Yeah, we have to.
You have to adapt, so I, I don't know what to do with them.
It's gonna be normal.
And, and how far to bump stuff out, because projects just aren't gonna get done then.
Well, we say always stumble through tomorrow, and, and you know, what goes on, maybe we can continue with these meetings, I mean, I don't know.
All they wanna do is continue it tomorrow.
I know. So like, meet in person, is that?
Yeah, and we don't know when that can happen.
To do it, that's just a, I mean, if, I mean, if we're spread out enough somewhere, that's the worst part, PA system or something, and then.
To a sunny day and go to the third ground.
That's the thing, but outside, but, you know, but then you're gambling on, plan for a decent day, we could do it in the parking lot, if we're on the playground somewhere, spread out far enough.
Go to a football field, I, I don't know.
Right.
This is.
Well, even if Billy is the playground, but you can only have ten people, that's max.
Well, technically, you're only supposed to have ten people, whether it's outdoors or indoors, as of yet, it could change next.
Except for, except for election.
Or religion.
That's the only.
Yeah, but even then, it's supposed to be continuous flow, correct, I mean, it's, uh, you can't.
I hope they, I hope they say, I'm already put something that.
Yeah, but for the election though, are you gonna allow more than ten, maybe they'll have to wait outside, come in, single file.
Doing anything that day?
Yeah, I'm springing that day, pretty sure.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be, that'd be conflicting, interesting.
I'd go ask AJ or Ken, yeah.
I'm bringing fire truck with hose, that'll be our security.
Now, you're really gonna, well, as we say a prayer before.
Yeah, well, let's see what tomorrow brings, I guess, and if we're gonna continue it, then we'll talk to John and.
Are you guys gonna be located here for the meeting?
Just as well be, we can't, we have people in here, right?
Yeah, yeah, nobody's coming in here, it'll just be us.
I just wanted to know where to set up.
Hopefully people understood that.
Yeah.
You know, we'll be waiting at the door.
Well, all the landowners, I think, talk to themselves, and some talk to you guys, but nobody called, only one person called my office, so I, I don't know.
I, I don't, like, they can't speak more than I have.
Technically, kind of the interest too, then, well, it shows almost interest, I'll be, but really, there's only a few concerned people, really, the rest of them never show up anywhere.
Well, we'll see what tomorrow morning brings, and if we're gonna continue it, we will, and then we'll just look at.
See what's gonna happen.
What's gonna happen, I mean, see what's gonna happen, maybe they'll open up a little more, maybe allow more people in one area.
Cause I'm thinking you just, well, bump the rest of them to July or August, but.
I would imagine.
And frost or thunders, I don't know.
Do it all on seventh of August, September.
Yep.
But then the work won't, if there's any work involved, it won't get done, and they're just gonna have to understand that.
Yeah, cause that's why, that's why we did all that, uh, projects and reclassifications, and that's why we did this. Same thing with DD two, I mean, there's, there's waiting work on, I mean, potentially waiting to work on this thing, and there was inequities in the assessments, that's what we were gonna hit with it. I guess that's.
Well, spread is a long time already, so another couple months is not gonna hurt, another month or two.
Uh, I'll see what kind of action we get tomorrow, involve people, see.
See if actually people log on to at least the tribe, and we can continue it.
I'd, yeah, set us up here, Joel, we'll get. Okay. Most maintenance.
And then probably wouldn't hurt to have somebody, I don't know if you want me to do it or whatever, but, you know, take, cause we'll probably have a bunch of phone numbers on there, so some sort of tenant sheet or something.
And that technically, that's, they should have their names, we need to have their names.
Yeah, well, we could ask for it.
Yeah, maybe just unmute everybody that one at a time and wear.
Yeah.
Just look, just read off.
Just listen to phone number and ask.
There's a number of, what's your name?
The same track. Alright.
Oh, and just a little FYI for you guys, I can't remember if I emailed there or not, but I sent a lot of them.
We might have ignored it.
Um, um, we are, we, remember we had that credit balance at Waterloo for juveniles?
Yes.
That has been used, and so we've notified the juvenile court system to start sending our kids to Eldora.
Okay.
Plus, uh, North Ottawa is not, or Waterloo is not taking kids with COVID, as of yet, if there is an issue.
Yeah.
Um, but.
On how they know if they have it.
Uh, they've already, they've been told, they've, they've been turning, sending other kids away, so that's creating some controversy now between the two of them down there again, because Eldora is taking and, uh, they have a separate isolation wing, a separate ventilation, where Waterloo does not, I had some emails from Sam this week from Waterloo, and wants to know if he's still on the right of track, and I guess as far as we're concerned, he is, but almost, the courts were almost ordering him to take him, and he's not, so, um, they are going to Eldora, which is good for Eldora, Tony does a good job of that, so, but, so that would be a reason why or why not, and we have memberships to both, they're in good shape, so, we're good.
And thanks, Andy, cause she's been on top of that, and she's been taking, she.
I'm glad we use, I'm not glad we use the credit up, but there was like seventy-five hundred bucks or something, so it's been used, so that's good.
This is not left out there for nothing.
Yeah, it was sitting there.
Okay, anything else? Take most of your turn.
Still move.
Second, all in favor, I?
Alright.
Alright, meeting is adjourned, thank you.